We wish to accept.
So I'm sorry for the confusion tonight on the charts here. I want to put together something that makes complete sense. Make sure Robin signs off on it and make sure our franchise fee is included in there and give you, I guess we'll do the four options. One way it is now. Now, yeah, the yours too, yeah, but.
When doing so, can you also put a total figure? So how much are we multiplying this by if we're covering the cost ourselves? Or whether or not we can select multiple options or whether or not we do all that kind of stuff? All this seems very confusing to me as well.
Yeah, it just confusing and this hasn't helped the chart. That's probably my fault. But I think there are four options. I think you just talked about them. Just solid waste removal, your own can, solid waste removal with a toter, solid waste removal with a toter, in pain for recycling. And then we've top waste removal with a toter and a recycling toter all inclusive, and that would be the city contract.
Well, what is, what is the next step on this? I know Bellevue's got their council meeting tomorrow night. Is this up to council to decide and approve by vote, or is this an administration decision?
It's, I think it would be a vote by the city council to contract.
It's vote next month.
Right, Frank? I mean, yeah, I mean, it's over forty thousand dollars.
First reading.
So that's a decision and we would be, that would be made at the next city council meeting in June, second Tuesday of June.
You gotta kind of know because remember June thirtieth is gonna be honest. It's gonna be transitioned, it's gonna be confused.
We have to make sure we have enough carts in inventory for this rollout.
Right.
We, Rumpke does ask that we know as soon as possible.
If we were to decide on, and I'll just throw this out because some other people have expressed this, the bare minimum, in other words, what we've got right now.
It's a big dump.
And if down the road, we decide that we're gonna have a put, you know, we've got some consensus to add toters or add recycling within the five-year period, can that, can this be updated to that? Or if we decide on a higher option between the two cities, can it be downgraded or are we locked in?
Bid it out.
Yeah, that's right.
Supposed to, you know, if you go above forty thousand procurement wise, you gotta bid it out again.
Probably had to bid it out again.
So present status of the law.
I think that's right.
So they bid this alternatively to give us option and.
Understood, understood. I'm just asking.
What if, you know, you gotta ask what if Republic Waste Management of Dayton wanted to come in here? Oh, you, you just did a deal and now you're doing a new deal without allowing us to come in here and bid on that.
I'm talking about keeping the deal with Rumpke, but amending it or changing it to add or delete some of the options we may pick.
I, yeah, I think it would be, I think it would be legally.
Question for.
Yeah.
Legal research, Alex.
I mean, they did a bid based on RFP and they gave us the options we asked for. So we didn't ask that as an option in the bid to do that. I don't, I think we're stuck with that.
Have you ever seen a situation?
I have not. I would think that the only time that you would be able to make a change like that would be in your, after your initial five-year term, if you choose to do your five-year renewal, that would be the time you would make a change.
Okay.
Is on that, at beginning of that sixth year.
I'm just thinking if we get a new council in either or both cities and they're really high on the, you know, recycling, for example, could they change that to add that?
What is the recycling participation right now for Dayton? Does anyone know? What?
Are you asking percentage wise?
Yeah. How many, how many residents do you have that recycle right now?
I'm not sure. It seems to be like fifty fifty if you're asking me like.
Okay, okay.
Think recycling's that much?
I think it's much lower respectfully. I mean, they have the yellow lids. I don't see that many of them out.
I'm calling my neighborhood.
So I have a question on these choices. These are for residents to choose, like some people are adamantly don't want recycling and some people are very adamantly do want recycling. So these are individual choices.
Only if you can, you can make it that way or we can require it. That's, that's one of the options. You require it, you know, or you can allow them to rent it themselves.
Okay. And then number two, this might be a side issue, but I, I hope that whatever we do here, we have a higher standard of garbage cans because the blowing around garbage has been a problem for a really long time. And whatever totes, whatever we do, they should be totes. They should have proper tops and make sure that we,
I agree.
This time clean up the secondary issue that is ongoing and.
We use Rumpke garbage cans. They're, they're very solid and the lids won't come up, it'll come off in the wind.
Well, Joe was saying, and I have that too, like if we clean out the garage every couple of years or something, we have a stash under there, you know, like extra ones, but they have lids. But I noticed like some people will put out a bunch of stuff and they've got every weird can that they've ever had out there with stuff blowing everywhere. And I feel like we should, you know, have a firm, like if you're gonna put your own cans out there, they also have to have lids. You don't have to be maybe a toter, but lids, you know.
They're required to, aren't they?
That's currently under, that's currently.
Okay, well, it's not happening.
That's required.
I don't know.
But they don't follow it.
Yeah.
But the nice thing is when the lids are attached.
Yeah, they have to have a lid.
Yeah, they, they stick around. All right, so.
Well, this has been a good discussion.
Hey, what's that?
It has been a good discussion.
Has been a good discussion. I, I will get new numbers that were accurate, that were, make sure they were accurate and have Robin look at it tomorrow and have it for your meeting tomorrow night.
So tomorrow we meet at seven. If you'd like to come in and ask more questions, interact with our mayor, council. Give your opinion.
And your per unit cost is going to be different than ours because we have a franchise fee and you don't.
Correct.
That just goes along with separate. The per unit price would be the same for the trash, but the franchise fee will be added to, added to that. Yeah, this is still the same for the basic service. Franchise fee is just something additional that you're not charging that we do. Right, right.
Franchise.
Right, exactly. Right. But the solid, this, this solid waste service will be the same for those cities. You all have a separate fee you charge differently than we do.
In this process, I called around the cities and I learned that every city has a little nuance to how they do this.
Well, every city is unique in itself and you've got to make sure that you tailor your needs to what your city needs.
Press fee bill subsidizes garbage collection to keep fee low by way of.
They've got a lot of jobs and payroll tax and press bills.
As a president of Bellevue, not speaking as the city administrator, I encourage you to go higher plane route, to go the higher route, have mandatory toters and mandatory like that's as a citizen of Bellevue.
Is that what Covington?
As a citizen of Bellevue, that should be a Bellevue city council. But I appreciate your comments.
Is that what Covington has, mandatory recycling and, and Newport too, or Newport? They have both of them.
Do most cities do that?
Right, or Thomas too. They, I know they have both. And that's all they charge, like they charge for both and they send out a fee like, like we do.
Drop down alleyway, cities that have standardized toter, drop down alleyways, cities that don't, you'll see a market difference.
I agree. Okay.
Well, basically what we're looking at here, and this is without the franchise fee for us. If you were to go with just the basic, which is one sixty-eight, that's three dollars and twenty-three cents a week to haul away all your stuff. That's pretty cheap. If you add the tote at forty-two dollars, no matter what the size, it comes out to four dollars and four cents a week. With recycling and no tote, it's four fif, four dollars and fifty cents a week or five dollars and thirty cents a week at the high end, which would be with recycling and with a tote rental. So five dollars and thirty cents a week. I'd pay somebody to take my stuff away for that. Do you want a vote decision or update the numbers or what do you want?
You're definitely not ready for that right now.
I think we need the numbers that are clear to everybody and the vote, I think we just do in the June meeting. Unless you need earlier, I mean, could do a special.
Like, well, the sooner the better as far as the route, which, which route you're gonna go, whether you're gonna go trash and recycling with toters, the sooner we know, the better. So I'm not sure if you guys, because your meeting is tonight, Frank says tomorrow night, after we, you know, I'll be at both. So I'll kind of get a feel for what everybody's thinking.
Yeah.
If somebody could let me know by end of the week to the first of next week, what avenue you're thinking of, I can let our folks know.
I'm kidding, because we have.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Laws and they have to make the decisions in public, so.
Can you call a special meeting?
That's, we could call a special meeting, yeah. I think, and Frank, are you guys planning to vote tomorrow night or you're just, just information? Okay.
So you're waiting thirty days on both cities, sounds like, or fourteen days if we both want to do a special meeting?
We, we have a regular scheduled meeting in two weeks from now and you, you probably do too, right? Okay. Well, we can meet in two, our regular scheduled meetings in two weeks from tonight. We normally don't do it, but we do it, we have it for reasons like this.
Maybe on the twenty-seventh?
Is that enough time?
Yeah, it's better than mid-June for sure. Yes, yes.
So we got two weeks to have this discussion, to make your minds up, ask questions, talk amongst yourselves, not as a group.
And I can give you Robin's email address. She's been very helpful. If you all have any questions directly of hers, would you be able to answer those?
Yeah, she's been great. Robin, you've been, you've been really great through this whole process. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Warnock. Does anybody need a restroom break or anything? It's been an hour and a half. I just want to roll through.
I don't think, there shouldn't be that much discussion on the rest of it. We should be able to roll through.
You never know, never. All right, we're just gonna go ahead and roll through. Uh, thank you very much for your presentation, Robin. Uh, next on the docket, we are gonna open up the podium for anybody from the audience who would like to discuss any of the upcoming, uh, tonight's legislative items on our agenda. So if you want to speak on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to use the podium. Mike, you stood up, Mike. I'm messing with you, buddy. How about that reinstatement of heroes? Yay, nay, and.
Yeah.
See you, bud. Take care. Thanks for coming tonight, guys.
Thanks for coming.
All right, if there was gonna approach the podium for the night's agenda topic, we'll go ahead and close it out, which brings us up to the first, first reading of this evening, which would be Orders twenty twenty-five dash one. Ms. Klein, please.
An ordinance adopting the City of Dayton, Kentucky's annual budget for the fiscal year running from July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, and estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the city to the full extent authorized by KRS eighty-two point zero eight two and interpretive case law.
Mr. Barks.
You called. So I'm here to talk about the City of Dayton twenty twenty-six fiscal year budget. A lot of this is gonna be the same things that you hear every, hear every year. It is already on the website because I know I'm gonna get that question. And this is off of the website itself. So the fourth and fifth pages are just gonna be the ordinance itself. This is not a line item budget. You're essentially budgeting for each department versus specific line items, something to remember. And I'm going to skip over a lot of this because we've seen it every year and nothing has changed. But there's a lot of good information in here for, uh, community members or the council or whoever to go into and look into. Has a lot of great information about the city's financials, our bank accounts, why we set up our bank accounts the way we do.
Jared, if I could interrupt you on page, if you go back to page fourteen, with the Potabon Point, which is your number three, is that a fifty fifty TIF?
That's a fifty fifty TIF.
Okay, thank you. If you can include that on there on the final, it'd be great.
There's also an organizational chart for those that are curious about how the city functions and how the departments are split up. Page seventeen is the city council priorities that you guys set up on your strategic planning session, which kind of informs us on what we should be paying attention to and what we should be spending money on. Revenues, as you can see, revenues are trending up. They have year after year for many years in a row. A newer development is that occupational and payroll tax is our, now our number one revenue generator, which is a great sign for us, meaning we're getting more jobs and more people working in the city. So property tax, when I started here, accounted for thirty-four percent of revenue and now it's down to twenty-four percent. And occupational payroll license fees, and I've been here for three years, so it was fourteen percent my first year, now it's thirty-one percent. So it's telling you how much more money we're getting in. We have a lot more people working in the city and the, the city staff and the city clerk's office has also done an excellent job after, of going after people that are not paying their taxes, which is, was a weak point of the cities prior to that. There's also a chart showing all the expected grant revenues. You can see all of our grant projects that we have. The two that are bolded are ones that haven't been officially approved. However, we have to assume going into it, they want to see that we have it budgeted already. So we have to put those into the budget itself. Page twenty-two is gonna show you all the revenue schedules and what we anticipate coming into the city as far as revenue. And there's two years of comparables, kind of showing you where we're getting information and how you can see those trend lines as well in a more drilled down fashion. Are there any questions about revenues? Revenues are good. That's what you need to know. Expenditures. So over time, in this chart, you'll see that what we budget for increases year after year. We're over ten million dollars now. But that's because we have all of these grant projects that keep circling back every year. They're not being completed. So we have to continually, so our bank balance is also increasing because we're withholding those funds. This is a chart that I show the council pretty often and it's going to show each of the departments. They're all color coded and stacked on top of each other and they represent all the expenses of this city. And then the black line above shows the revenue of what we're anticipating. What we want to see here is a gap in between those, showing that we are receiving more revenues than we are spending. And we have done that for, since twenty twenty-three. We've been getting more money than we've been spending.
In the past though, we were doing just the opposite.
Right, so you can see in prior years, we were spending more than we were making, which is obviously not a long-term strategy. General fund expenditures, this is just like the revenues chart where it's gonna have the two years of comparables and then it's gonna have what we are estimating for our upcoming budget. You can see here that these are all the separate departments and the percentage of the budget that they, um, show. And then the capital spending is fifty percent, fifty-six percent of our budget because we, again, we have all these projects that just keep rolling over. So the capital investment plan is really what people are interested in when they look at a city budget. These are gonna be all the projects and all the extra spending and the things that they're actually gonna be able to see happening out in the field. Though the first thing I wanted to talk about was the additional personnel in this budget. We've budgeted for the Public Works Department to have an additional crew member, which would bring them up to five. And then we are budgeting for two additional staff for the Fire Department and that will bring them up to fourteen. As far as spending for items and infrastructure, we are budgeting to add three more police vehicles to the fleet. If you remember, these are the enterprise leasing of the vehicles, which will save us significant amounts of money. I think it's two hundred thousand dollars in the next two years. So they will be getting rid of three of their old vehicles and then coming on with these new leased vehicles. The Public Works Department is asking for a wood chipper, which is fifty thousand dollars. City Clerk's Office is asking for sixty thousand dollars for new tax software that will be catered to cities. We're using QuickBooks right now and it's very difficult for us to use. So this will save a lot of employee time and a lot of headache on our part. I'm also budgeting forty thousand dollars from the general fund for new playground equipment to be combined with school funding. The school is splitting that cost with this. We're each putting in one hundred thousand dollars. For our part, forty thousand dollars will come from the general fund and sixty thousand dollars will come from the park fund. One of the major initiatives of the council in the strategic planning session was a new public works garage. So we've budgeted one point two million dollars for a new garage for them. Monument Park lighting, twenty thousand dollars, and I'm gonna kind of speed up as we go through here because I know we've been here for quite a long time. Fifty thousand dollars toward a city hall design. Our major spending this year, and this is something different than what we've done in the past, is most of our spending for, or all of our spending, I should say, for road repair comes from municipal road aid. And that's the gas tax that comes from the state. The state gives us an allotment of money every year. But of course, the cost of asphalting all these roads has significantly increased and the funding has stayed relatively the same. So in order for us to keep up with these projects and make sure that these streets are maintained, it's going to take us spending out of our funds to pave these streets. So a lot of people have questions as far as how the streets are chosen. And I think it's important to say that none of the council really chooses. The mayor doesn't choose. It comes down to the city engineer. He does a rating score. He's a third-party engineer that is not on our payroll. So he comes up with a list. Based on that list, we have to see are there any future utility cuts coming to this street? We do not want to pave a street only for it to be cut into and then you're gonna have all those rets and things in the street.
We have several on Eighth that are gonna be held over till next year.
Right, so you might be seeing streets that you're like, hey, this one looks worse than the one that we're choosing. It's likely slated for utility cuts.
Right.
So we're choosing not to fund that street at this time.
But we will next year.
And then of course, the last thing is just however much funding that we have available. So in this chart, it's gonna show all the streets that we've chosen based on those three criteria points for a total of seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. This is more than the last five years combined. City, we typically spend around one hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, so seven hundred and twenty-six thousand is significantly higher. But we felt like it was important and to be able to catch up to these projects that need to be done.
And we had the money and this is what people expect from, from the city.
Streets. We also put in a hundred thousand dollars towards stormwater projects. A lot of times SD one will split the cost with us or there's a cost sharing, so we can make those dollars go further. Um, and we've also put fifty thousand dollars towards seal coat, seal coating, prac sealing, they call it. And that is to extend the life of a street, so we do not have to pave it, which will save us money over time. Next is the capital spending for our grant matching, so it's a chart just showing all of what the city is going to be putting into all the grants. All of our grants currently are eighty twenty, meaning the city is only spending twenty percent and the rest comes from the state or federal government. So throughout the rest of that page is just going to go through each of those grant projects, what they are, how much we're spending and all of that. We are continuing the sidewalk grant and parking pad grants for residents. We will have ten one thousand dollar parking pad grants available for a total of ten thousand dollars. And then we will have ten twenty-five hundred dollar sidewalk grants for a total of twenty-five thousand dollars. And the last thing here is we are reserving funding. Jay mentioned earlier that the Seventh Street slide project was gonna cost five hundred thousand dollars. We don't have five hundred thousand dollars to put toward that, but we do have two hundred thousand dollars that we can put toward that. So we're putting that essentially in a savings account and earmarking it for this project so we can build up that account over time, so we can get that project finished.
Will you be able to delay that project, the sliding on Seventh project?
So.
Is it an emergency?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's not, it's still passable right now, but one side of the road cannot, is not passable. So there's only one resident lives at the end, so it's not really affecting a whole lot of people. But they're concerned and they've expressed concern to me about it and it needs to be, it needs to be repaired. But we're putting two hundred thousand aside for it. Hopefully we can get some state money, so we don't have to use it. That's what this pitch was about tonight. But if, if not, we'll try to continue to fund it and pay for it ourselves. It has to be, it has to be done.
Are there any questions about expenditures? Okay, easy enough. So of general fund expenditures, I should say. So like I said, playground equipment, the rest of the money is gonna come out of the park fund. And then the park board will have a hundred and ten thousand dollars for park upgrades on whatever is necessary in our park system. So we'll have an additional hundred and ten thousand dollars. Usually the board meets and they decide what projects they want to do and then us at City Hall pick and choose and then we move forward. Last thing is our Economic Development Fund, Dayton Business Assistance Grants. That's all the rental help and the facade grants and all of that. We are putting fifty thousand dollars, which matches what we had in the previous year. Last thing is fund balance. This is going to show you in the bottom charts how much I anticipate having at the beginning of the fiscal year in the bank account and how much at the end I'm anticipating having in. So you can see at the beginning of the year, I'm anticipating five point four million dollars and then at the end, three point one million dollars, which is significantly higher than our, what our fund balance requires. We usually put in ten to fifteen percent and this is well beyond that. So we still have a very healthy fund at the end of the day in case other priorities come up or an emergency happens. Are there any questions?
One, one small one. On the sidewalk grant and parking pad grant, how much of that has been used this year?
We've only had our first project done just two weeks ago and so we only spent, I think, maximum, what are those, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, so we have carryover from that as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do people know about that?
We advertise it in our newsletter every month and then we've put it on social media a few times.
I think we should do it again. I mean, now's the time people are starting to think about sidewalks and then.
Well, we had talked about, because Bill was going to be inspecting sidewalks and then he would be able to talk to homeowners who had issues. So once we get that list of the, if there's deteriorated sections, we can offer them those.
He has to talk about that. He is, he is raiding those sidewalks now, so.
So we'll have, we'll have a better view on who actually needs it. Nothing else?
Well, I know that we had a spike in the occupational tax. A lot of that, I think, was due to the construction down on the riverfront and the hundreds of people that they brought in for that. Do you anticipate that current number to stay the same, go down, increase?
There's really no way of knowing, I mean, until we get there, but I, I mean, we've all seen the construction projects and all the construction crews. But I, I mean, we've all seen the construction projects and all the construction crews that have been out. The football field is a major one for us right now. So once these projects start dying down, I mean, of course, we're going to get less funds.
Yeah, I mean, it's a hit and miss depending on a big project going on or not.
But I mean, we've done an excellent job of diversifying all of those different buckets for the funding that we get. We still have all of the property tax. Like I said, the property tax equated to 34% of the budget. We're getting more property tax now than we did then, but it only amounts to 20% or whatever. So we're just getting significantly more funds than we did before. Okay, thank you.
Good job, Jared. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Again, that's the first reading of ordinance 2025-1. So again, take the next month or two weeks and come up with questions and questions and bring them up. Next up is first reading of ordinance 2025-2. Ms. Klein, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 95 of the City of Dayton, Kentucky Code of Ordinances to add a new section prohibiting the use of motorized vehicles in Sergeant Park other than in parking areas of the park, including a criminal penalty for failure to comply with this code section.
We've had some issues with folks riding motorized vehicles, motorbikes, ATV's in the area, in Sergeant Park, and we have some complaints from neighbors. So we felt like we needed to do this. We've spent a lot of money on these trails for bikes and people, not for motorized vehicles. So this is the only park where we're prohibiting that, but we don't really have an issue any other parks with this. So it's kind of hidden, so we have cameras down there, and we will enforce it. We'll impound these vehicles if they're found using the park.
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett. Moving right along to order resolutions. Next up is order resolution 2025-8. Romeo, Ms. Klein, please.
An order resolution of the City Council of the City of Dayton, Kentucky, appointing individuals to various city boards and commissions.
Yes, so we had a couple openings on boards, and we recommended, the mayor's recommended Jeff Volter on the code enforcement board. He indicated he'd be happy to serve in that commission on that board. We also have Nathan Kruger, who's appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And he will replace Sasha Finnemore, who resigned from the commission because she moved out of town out west. So, and then we also have, this was just an oversight. We should have done this when Tristan came on board. But Tristan was, is being appointed to Sergeant Park Foundation to replace Tiffany Myers, which is required by the trust agreement of the city and the Sergeant Park Foundation.
That is eight order resolutions. We have to have a vote. Do I have a motion to accept order resolution 2025-8R for the appointment of board members?
I'll make that motion.
Member Neiman's made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Remember, Kelly's made a second. Roll call, please.
Member Neiman?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Member Judd?
Aye.
Member Lovins?
Aye.
Member Horton?
Aye.
Member Neary?
You guys have it. Next on the docket would be order resolution 2025-9. Romeo, Ms.?
An order resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a municipal road, municipal aid co-op program contract between the City of Dayton, Kentucky and the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Rural and Municipal Aid for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, as provided in the Kentucky Revised Statutes, and accepting all streets referred to therein as being streets which are a part of the incorporated city.
This is an annual order resolution we have to pass required by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. So in order to get this municipal road aid funding, we have to do this. We'll be getting about $132,000 this year. It's up a little bit from last year. Unfortunately, this is based on the gas tax we all pay, and they not changed the rate of that gas tax in, I don't know, what, 30 years? So the gas prices go up, but we still have, we get a little bit more of a gas price go up, but it should be some sort of kicker that goes with inflation, but it doesn't. So they talked a little bit about it tonight. A lot of these funds, we generate here in these urban areas, and they go down to rural areas in Kentucky. So been unfair. Counties get probably more of this than the cities do, so I think they're trying to adjust that. But a little bit, helps a little bit, but as you can see, barely scratches the surface with the types of work we need to do on our streets, streets and roads.
So again, we will be voting on this. Order resolution 2025-9. Romeo, do we have any, do I have a motion to accept?
No move.
Member Neary's made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Judd's made a second. Any comments, questions, concerns? Roll call, please, Ms. Klein.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neiman?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Member Judd?
Aye.
Member Lovins?
Aye.
Member Horton?
Aye.
You guys have it. Next and last on the docket for the evening would be order resolution 2025-10. Romeo, Ms. Klein, please.
An order resolution authorizing the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet to change the route of Kentucky Route 8 from Clay Street between Fourth and Sixth Streets to Main Street between Fourth and Sixth Streets.
We've talked about this before in other meetings. We want to move Route 8 one block away, away from the new football stadium and the schools, away from the children that are there. I've gotten indication that state's willing to do this, but they wanted us to pass some formal, formal document authorizing this and then just send it on to them.
And Mr. Fawcett, do I have a motion to accept Romeo 2025-10?
I'll make the motion.
Member Lovins has made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, my member Horton, was it you, Terrace? Member Horton made a second. Which opens up for discussion, any discussion or go ahead?
Let me just add that we are required to repave that section of the streets since they've already repaved the streets and now become ours, the old route.
And that was in the budget that Mr.?
And that's in the budget that we just talked about a few minutes ago. So yeah, that, those sections will need to be repaved.
Within six months.
Within six months.
When does this go into effect?
What's that?
When will this go into effect?
When they, 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 once we give it to them, they will have to then decide to do it. And I don't know how long it will take. So hopefully, I mean, it's a pretty simple move. We've got to move some signs. It shouldn't be too hard. Well, we do have to add, when we do repaving, we do have to add a couple ADA ramps, which is required. So that's going to add a little additional cost. But yeah, most of the, their work will be minimal. They just have to move some signs.
Any comments, questions, concerns?
So they could change the signage quickly.
Yeah.
And we want to get it done before school starts back.
But then they got to change the maps and the official maps of the highway maps and all that stuff. That comes, it's a process. But I think our, for our purposes, they could change the signs pretty quickly. We're hoping, I told him, we want to try to get done before the football field was finished, school started the new year. Hopefully, they'll, they'll expedite it.
I'll hold the ladder.
Right.
I was going to say, we don't think that they'll like hold the changing of the signage up to us fulfilling our obligations for the ADA ramping and the paving?
Well, I think that we were indicating we will do that, and I, and I will show them the contract. They want to see it that we're doing it. And so we're going to be entering in that contract here pretty soon in the new year, so, the fiscal year. So I think they'll be fine with it.
Let us say the city shall have six months after this date to undertake the improvement. So that puts, yeah, Christmas.
Yeah, that should get us into the fall if we need to.
Right.
Any other questions, comments, concerns regarding 2025-10? All right, we've had a motion by Member Lovins, a second by Member Horton. Roll call, please, Ms. Klein.
Member Horton?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neiman?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Member Judd?
Aye.
Member Lovins?
Aye.
You guys have it unanimously. We are done with voting. Moving right along to department directors' monthly reports. As in Dayton, we go ladies first, Ms. Patterson.
Ah, you have my report. I'm going to be short and sweet.
Oh.
The sidewalk. So Bill does have that all mapped out. He walked every sidewalk. And we're going to meet Bill, Jay, and myself probably next week. We're going to decide on where we want to start. Do we want to start with the walkable sidewalks? Do we want to start with, you know, we'll probably go the school route first and then go from there, kind of break it down into, you know, sections on when we want to send people notices and things like that.
How's it looking?
It's a lot.
Okay.
It's a lot. And then we will also send our flyer with those notices, so that, just to let everybody know. And then there's that. Bill also is going to ramp up the inspections again. We're going to, this year, it's going to be a little different. In the past, three units and above, the fire department did all the common areas. They're going to start going, we're going to try to get them all together so that we're only coming out once instead of the fire department going and then us going and things like that. So we're, we're trying to get that all together. And it's about it, really. Busy, grass is growing like crazy. Yeah, other than that, all good.
Cassie, I'd like to volunteer my sidewalk for if Bill wants to come by and we work something out and we have a public service announcement, we could like do some kind of PSA, and I'll volunteer a piece of my sidewalk so we can do something. Camera, it's something like we can get the word out, and I, you know, I'll volunteer a patch of my driveway to, you know, like to, to improve the incentive.
Sounds great. Any questions? All right, thanks.
Rick, it's your busy time of year. Why don't you give us your report, sir?
We're cutting it in the rain or whatever it takes, but we're staying busy. Took that tree down off the house last week, and that was a little challenging, but we got it down. And we're working on Memorial Day parade route. So yeah, we're, we're staying busy. We've got plenty of work to do. Anybody's got any questions? I mean.
So you voted, so we talked about getting the crack sealer and where you're going to be doing that.
Yeah, that'd be in, we're going to do some sealing of tracks on, I guess, River Point.
River Point.
And Manhattan Boulevard, yeah, before the streets get too bad. We'll be doing that probably the second week of June.
By doing it, it keeps the water from getting into the, under the pavement and creating the potholes and deterioration. So those are two relatively new streets. We'd like to try to get some extra life out of.
And we're getting two skids of material on that, and the machine is furnished by the company that we're getting it through. And yeah, I mean, we're, we're busy. I mean, cutting grass, I mean, potholes, we've been doing a lot of potholes. Had a couple sinkholes that we repaired. Got one up on Berry that we still got to get. But we got plenty of work to do. If anybody's got anything for us.
How's it working out with the Grant Park SD1 project?
It's finished.
Great.
Yeah, it's worked out great. There, there's no more water on that side of the street, although one of the neighbors said he'd tied in, and he hadn't. So on phase two, we'll, we'll tie him in the next, that project. But it, it looks great. They did a great job.
Moving up there one day when it was raining, it was just good to see the water diverting where we're supposed to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, so right before they hooked the pipes in, there was a lot of water coming out of that black corrugated pipe.
Yeah.
Some of the sun pumps never stop. They just like churn and churn and churn. So yeah, it's going to be much, much safer in the wintertime too, that area.
And we've probably got another year to go up there that gets more tied in, probably next year, whenever.
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably do phase two. We have money set aside for that from the, that, that TIF project. So we'll use that in SD1, we'll pay for half of it. So I think we'll do, probably do another project. Have Mike starting design that this, this summer.
Has the hiring process started for the new employee?
I think it was July 1st, Jared?
Yeah, I'm July 1st when it's good.
You have a question for Mr. Lucas? Thank you for your work, sir. We appreciate you. Mr. Haffel, I know you've had a really busy month. Why don't you tell us about it?
Just some news. Caleb started the academy last week, so he's had a full weekend. We expect good things from him. He's already been assigned team leader already at the academy in his first class. So he's really, and when he was back, back a month, they already, they, the previous class put him as team leader too. So we expect good things from him. As Rick said, we're working on the parade, the ins and outs and safety of the parade, making sure we get the people. And I think we'll probably be putting something together off of Baldwin did to try to get something out to the public on what closures we're going to be having, what time, kind of just a reminder that we do every year. And just this Friday, we're going to be meeting the special ed class at Lincoln Elementary down Gillin. We're having popsicles and all that stuff with them, so that's something we're going to be doing Friday. I just shout out to Sergeant Lane Kugel for putting that together. I won't be there. It's the annual FOP golf outing, so I'll be on the golf course that day. So I think that's pretty much it. You have my report. You've seen, traffic's gone up a little bit. I've added some things as far as some places of, I guess, concern throughout the city. So this is something, I guess, the police department really never had to deal with. We never had traffic. You know, we've dealt with the crime. We just, you know, that we dealt with the avenue and, and the stuff beyond the flood wall. Now we have 1,000 more residents. We have a cut through, so we have more citizens cutting through. And with, which is good for us. Yeah, it's good for the city, but you know, they're not obeying some of the traffic laws. So we're getting a little complaints, Sixth and Berry, Sixth and Manhattan, speeding on Manhattan. So we've had to increase that. That's something, like I said, we just, we never had to deal with. It's something we're transitioning into more, more of a traffic type instead. Because more, we were along the criminal aspect, and crime has gone down significantly for us, which is good for the officers. They've done a really great job, the guys that I have. So we can concentrate a little bit more time on some of the traffic issues.
Is Officer Howell back from his on-duty injury, or is he still?
He started back Saturday.
Good, okay. And tell them about the flock camera if we haven't installed Bellevue.
So the flock camera was the.
According to what it is, I don't think they may not know what the flock camera is.
So what a flock camera does is it records vehicle types, license plates of vehicles coming into the city. It's something we do not monitor 24/7. It is something, we will get alerts if a stolen vehicle comes into town. Somebody who has a warrant associated with that vehicle comes into the town. And then if we have a crime, we can go back and search. Like we had something with a Tesla that was a white Tesla hitting cars and, or windshield, or not windshield, the rearview mirrors and stuff like that. If we have that system, if we had it in place, system just went up yesterday. We can type in Tesla, it'll tell me every Tesla that's coming into the city, and we're able to track those people down. So it's to help us, is a, it's a crime tool for us. If something does happen, we know who's coming into the city and we know who's leaving the city. If something happens, if somebody doesn't see anything, we rely on Ring cameras right now, people's home surveillance. We try to catch people, which is not very good quality. But it gives us an idea, and, and this just is a tool for us. It's not something that, like I said, it's monitored 24/7 at all. We'll get alerts, and, and we've joined other departments throughout the whole Commonwealth and Ohio stuff too. So we share our system with them if they need help finding somebody or something vehicle-wise that they can access the system and get in.
So you just got this and installed it?
I'm sorry?
What, Bellevue did?
It's in Bellevue.
It's in Bellevue, Bill.
It's in Bellevue. It's in the 700 block of Fairfield because we want to catch the cars coming into Dayton. Their register, their plates to see who's coming in. And then we'll have one on the other side of the flood wall here by Velo to catch people leaving the city. So that way, we're kind of doing the ingress, egress type thing, activity. We like to, me and Jay talked, try to get one more up on Dayton Pike. So that way, we have all the bases covered. If something happens, a crime's committed, we can find out. We'd have a really great tool to find out where they are or who they are, so.
Has Bellevue decided on whether they're going to install?
They're still discussing it.
Yeah. But it's something we will tie in. If they decide to get it, we will tie, we will share our system with them, so they would have the same access, vice versa. We would have access to theirs if we had something we needed.
You're talking about the Velo one and the Dayton Pike one? You're talking about the Velo one and the Dayton Pike one?
Velo.
Velo.
Yeah, we're waiting for Velo. Yeah. So that one's in installation phase right now.
Okay, so that's a definite.
It's not up yet, but it should be completed within the next week.
And you want one in Dayton Pike, but you don't have it?
We discussed one, yeah, for adding another one to Dayton Pike. That way it covers all.
Major routes.
Major routes into the city and exit routes out of the city.
So is it just for, like, you're looking for specific crimes or traffic violations? Are you?
No, it's not. It has nothing to do with traffic violations at all.
Crime?
It's, it's specifically a crime tool for us. If a crime's committed, like I gave the example of the white Tesla, I can go in, type in Tesla and it'll give me, and we can put a date and time and all that other stuff. It'll give me every Tesla that's left the city or come into the city.
It's a crime in Newport.
We're there for crime in Newport.
Heading, heading our direction, they'll be able to track, track that individual.
Yeah. Crimes that take place other places, they can actually, sometimes we put out what they call bolos, be on the lookout, you know, for Mazda or something like that. We can check our system to see if that Mazda came into our city, passed through. We can help Newport, but now we're sharing with Newport so they can have access to that. So it's strictly for that, nothing to do with traffic.
Not like a, a stoplight.
Yeah, it's not a, not a traffic.
Sounds like asking.
Yeah, like you said, if somebody, it's a hit on a, on a tag or a stolen vehicle, that the vehicle was stolen and it comes into the city, we'll be alerted. That way we can quickly apprehend that suspect and.
The officer on duty would get that.
Yes.
Alert.
Yes.
So I can see where citizens might see that as a privacy concern. Will they be, will they be posted anywhere that those cameras are up? Is there a sign next to those cameras? Or are we notifying the citizens somehow that those are being put up?
There's no sign, but once we get them fully installed, we'll let them know where they're at.
How will that be?
We put it on our Facebook page and we can do it on the city website. That they're active and where they'll be located. So like I said, the ones just up and running, I was just playing around with it today. So I put in like a Ford and it had pictures, just the license plates of 20 Fords that came into the city within the hours.
Okay.
Any other questions for Chief Halfill? Thank you for your service, sir. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Last and certainly not least, Chief Shaver.
Everybody has my report. I think Cassie and Bill, like I said, working with them, getting these inspections is going to be a huge help. It's a nightmare sometimes trying to track all this down. Doing a lot of training this month. I know we did the pre-prom events for both, both schools. We always enjoy doing that. Then St. Elizabeth has really neat, they have a portable SIM lab. And this month we had them bring in, it's actually their mannequin. I mean, these mannequins breathe, have blood pressures, do everything. So the ones they had this, this month came in and actually would deliver baby, babies, you know, cut them umbilical cord, babies, skin changes colors, gets into distress. And we absolutely terrified the UPS guy. Kate came in right in the midst of that and left without saying anything, but we've been doing that. Had that. We had Christ Hospital come in for some training. We, we do have, our ladies auxiliary bought us a new forcible entry door and working on that a lot. Now the weather's breaking, getting out, probably seeing us behind the flood wall still. Working on getting our pumps going and things like that. But aside from that, that's all I got. If anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Oh, quick. Thank you, chief. I mean, really, thank you, chief. All right. Next report and last report, sir?
It's hours late and we've talked already, so I'll pass.
Sure. Any questions for Administrator Fawcett?
I have a comment. I went to Sergeant Park. It's so nice. I think I, I hope people know how nice it is and how, all the improvements that they made, the bridges, gotten rid of a lot of honeysuckle, brought my dog. The stream is really nice. It's just sort of like maybe, you wouldn't think of it, but it's a very nice sun place to go and have.
Next couple of weeks, the pavilion would be redone, going to be redone too.
What is?
The pavilion.
Pavilion. Yeah, it's, it's great.
Major, major thanks to our volunteers. Some who sit on city council here with us.
And there is a volunteer day Saturday morning at 10 o'clock.
Really?
Yes.
What do you have to do?
Volunteer.
Come up, we'll show you.
Don't wear flink gloves. I wouldn't.
Yeah, a comment from me as well. So I, I know one of the priorities that made the list was doing more committee work. I would just like to propose that something to do with like either the budget or trash or anything like that. Anything, any line items on the budget or any type of revenue buckets or anything like that that are controversial, like these five-year contract type things. I think that's a good thing to build like an ad hoc committee for and have people hash a lot of this stuff out so that it's not coming out in the council meeting. That we actually have like clear, here's the option, here's the price, it's been vetted by all these folks. And I think in order to do that, we have to do it earlier. I'm not looking for you to comment on that now. I'm just, I'm just want to make sure that that's heard, that I think if we would have started this process sooner and/or maybe sent this to a committee so we can hash out a lot of stuff behind the scenes. So we're not taking all the citizens and staff members' times.
Can't be behind the scenes. This has got to be a public meeting. So any, anytime that you all meet, it's got to be a public meeting.
So two council members together.
Oh, I thought the committee is larger than two.
The city administrator requires an open meeting?
Two, two council members is fine. I thought you were having like three, three or so on.
No, I'm, I'm saying that we probably should start leveraging committees more often where people raise their hands for things they're passionate about on council and hash those things out in the background so that we're not spinning our wheels here, asking silly questions that could be answered and hashed out behind the scenes. And I'm not saying that for open records purposes. I'm saying for the sake of the citizens and for us and the city staff.
Would it be helpful to do that for, in preparation for the meeting in two weeks or just in general?
I, I think it would be. And, and I also have some questions about the, the meeting in two weeks, if whether or not it's a real full meeting or whether or not it's a special session where we're talking about one.
We have two regularly scheduled meetings every month.
Yeah.
The second and the fourth Tuesday. Generally don't do the second one unless we have something. So it's a, it's a full, it's a regular meeting. We can raise any issue, special meeting can only raise the issue that's on the agenda. But in that regular meeting, you can, any, any issue can be raised and discussed.
Correct. So are city staff coming back to that meeting as well in two weeks?
They don't have to.
To report on things?
Typically, they're, they're dismissed from that.
Okay. So it's not a full meeting, it's?
It could be. Gentlemen, ma'am.
I don't need them to be. I was going to suggest. My suggestion was going to be to excuse them if they were expected to be there.
They're typically allowed the evening off.
That was going to be my suggestion. I, I hate wasting people's time on things.
I think what we need to do is establish which committees you want. We've talked about this in the past. Come up with the committees and what their general responsibilities are. And then you could say, okay, who's going to be on this committee? Under, long ago, we had six committees. And you served as chairperson on one and you also served as second member of another committee. But it's defining the committees, like we used to have Parks and Real Estate Finance was one of the committees. I'll, I'll send you suggestions that I had.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what I'm looking for in regards to either standing committees or ad hoc committees as needed on certain endeavors.
I'm glad you brought it up. I think we should normalize that.
I would like to chair a Parks and Recreation League's exploratory committee. If anyone would like to sit on that committee with me.
I'm with the trash committee.
That is a good question. How would we form committees anyways? Is that an act by us?
I just tried.
So Karen and I talked about it. We, I mean, this committee is that you all are creating yourselves, right?
Yeah, yes.
At the beginning, it needs to be legislation.
We can come in, your meetings, we need answers, questions, things like this. But these are committees, your committees. They'll decide how to, how to operate them. It's really not.
So it can only be two people from city council without?
You can have more than two, but you just have to do, make sure those meetings are public. Anytime you have, you know, majority, you got to have.
You can have up to three. The fourth one would be a quorum.
So the fourth one is public and?
I still think, I still think.
What they discuss, any of the questions, questions, notes, put it down. Issue is, is that typically when you have these committees, you have a finance director or the police chief and fire chief, whatever committees you put together, they participate, they talk. No formal action, of course, can be taken. And then in the event that they take notes or they text or any of those other things, those can be potentially discoverable. However, that's a very gray area right now because it's up in the Supreme Court of what is public record. I mean, text messages on private phone, it's a, it's a hot topic right now. I'm right in the middle of one as we speak. So you just got to have to be kind of careful when you have these meetings. So what I would suggest is if you all decide you're going to put together the committees, we can send you out a memo and say, this is kind of the ground rules. This is what you should do. Many, many cities have, have committees. They have lots of, this is not abnormal. And then you guys can meet and you can ask questions of city staff and et cetera. But ultimately, the mayor is the one, and of course, as you all know, that they work for him essentially.
I'm all about having more engagement. The more people want to be engaged, the better, I believe. Let me know which committees you want. Who wants to be on them? I'm fine with it.
And I would just do it by resolution, creating a committee, just by a simple resolution. Doesn't have to be an ordinance. And then just putting it together and appointing them, the various people to the committees. That's what we used to do at the very beginning of the year when people came on board and you got sworn in. You decided what committees you wanted to serve on.
So if you will, send us a list of committees, anybody?
We'll work on it.
We'll entertain that.
I think we need a committee to develop the committees.
Exactly.
We should have a committee, committee.
Jay, I want to thank you for the quick action on the Route Eight rerouting. Thank you very much.
Just, we just got to get them to get it done, so.
Yeah, again, we're waiting on.
I think that would be an easy project compared to the other.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Chief, for Administrator Fawcett? All right. Any audience comments for anything you want to speak about? Yeah, you've been sitting patiently all evening. Could you please? They still open it up for the public to come and, come and watch.
I think that makes sense. I mean, probably no one's going to ever come.
This building's always open for. That's a good point.
Thank you for that, Robin. That's.
I think that's the right way to go.
That's a good point. Any other audience comments? Any new business?
I've got a brief one. So just to let folks know that there's a Lady Green Devil fundraiser, Navy Green Devil Basketball fundraiser this Saturday. It's cornhole tournament going to be hosted over at the Dayton Eagles, 1285, 1101 Third Street. Sign up start at four o'clock, play will start at five and it's $10. They'll have music, raffles, drink specials. So come on down and help support the girls' basketball team.
Cool.
Any other new business? All right. Looking forward to seeing everybody on the Memorial Day Parade, our biggest parade, our only parade, but also the biggest. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Member Neary's made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by member Kelly. Any abstentions?